We are live.
All right, caller's extension order. First item on the agenda is, I guess, Dan?
Yes, it is.
All right, Dan, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As a quick recap, we staff presented our recommended fiscal year 21 budget back on August 18th. That was our first presentation. And during that presentation, there was an opportunity for some discussion with the board. And we believe that that discussion went very well. So we appreciate that feedback and the time at that work session. So now here we are for kind of the second and hopefully final walkthrough of the fiscal year 21 budget as recommended by staff. After today, the plan is to have first reading of the budget on October 6th and second reading on October 20th. The plan tonight is to talk about only three of the funds. The rest of them all remain unchanged from what was presented on August 16th. So I don't think there's a need to reiterate or we go over those. But if there are any questions about any of those specific funds that I don't touch on right away, feel free to ask and I can, the slides are here so I can go to them. So, okay, let's make sure this works. Okay, so the first slide is just kind of a recap of what has changed from the first presentation in August until now. And the first item is we changed our fiscal year 20 sales and use tax projections, including the August 7th distribution that received, that we received. And if you remember back to that first presentation, at that time, we noted that that August 7th distribution was roughly $60,000. And we'll talk about Pember distribution looked like at the end of this a little bit. So we changed our fiscal year 20 projections to include those August 7th numbers. We also changed our fiscal year 20 projected expenditures. And that is based on the approval and expense of funds related to the items that are on the agenda tonight for budget amendment number three. Two of those items affect the general fund. One of those actually affects the transportation sales tax fund. So I'll touch on those as we get to each of those items. We also changed our fiscal year 21 sales and use tax projections. We updated our fiscal year 21 rental revenue projections for the senior center based on that conversation, which was at the August 4th work session. We changed some fiscal year 21 expenditure projections based on the conversation that we had. So we now included the Visit KC partnership. We've continued the radio replacement program. We've changed the expected cost for the dispatching for the police department. We reduced some operating costs for the senior center, again, based on that August 4th conversation. And we reduced some expenses at City Hall for building repairs and then also training and travel expenses for a couple of our departments. And then finally, we also changed our CIP plan for City Hall renovations in that timeline. And all of those things I just talked about, we're going to talk about in a little bit more detail in the next few slides. So we'll get a chance to elaborate on each of those a little bit. Okay, so here's just kind of a recap of our operating budget history. The fiscal year 20 projection revenue is just under 4.6 million, expenditures just over 4.4 million. So we're looking at about 180,000 or so in revenue over expenses for the current year. And then as we look at the 2021 budget, revenues currently projected at 4,634,000, expenses at 4,612,000. So about a $21,000 revenue over expenditure. Okay, this went back to the first slide. Okay, so the original recommended operating revenue budget was 4,597,900. Since that first presentation until now, we increased the, we added 13,000 in expected sales tax revenue in fiscal year 21. So how did we arrive at that number? We increased the fiscal year 20 projection by 39,670, which was the amount that August sales tax was over the August projection, just sales tax. But then we reduced our projection at the time of the last presentation. We projected a 1.25% increase in year-over-year sales tax revenue. We actually changed that to a 1% decrease. So we increased fiscal year 21 projections. But then we tempered how much of an increase we're projecting for next year as a whole, and we actually decreased it slightly. We did choose to keep the 1% increase for new sales from the marketplace. So the net change of all three of those, those changes resulted in us adding $13,000 to the revenue budget. Similarly, for use tax, we increased the projection for fiscal year 20 by 26,180. But then we reduced our projection from a 7.5% year-over-year increase to only a 5% year-over-year increase. So that we, we tempered the way that we were looking at those projections for year-over-year as well. So that added about 19,000 to the operating revenue budget. Then, again, based on that discussion from the August 4th work session on the senior center, we changed the expected rental revenue for the senior center, which added just under $4,000. So the sum of those three changes, we added about $36,000 to the operating revenue budget for a new recommended operating revenue budget of this 4,634,040. On the expenditure side, based on that discussion, again, we added the Visit KC partnership for $1,500. We increased our batching costs by 15,690. We included the department radios for a $15,000 cost, and that's, that would be year two of that program. We decreased the phone, TV, and internet cost for the senior center based on that discussion. We reduced the miscellaneous maintenance repairs at City Hall by $1,000. That's kind of in lieu, or because we're doing the larger CIP repairs, there shouldn't be the need for those little repairs that come up. And then training and travel budgets, we reduced admin and police training budgets collectively by about 5,500. So the total of those changes, we actually added 22,000 to the fiscal year 21 recommended operating expenditure budget for a total of 4,612,550. So in summary, what our operating budget looks like now is 4,634,000 in revenue, 4,612,000 in expenditures. So revenue is over expenditures by about $20,490. So we still have a balanced budget. We're actually in a little bit better position now with this presentation than we were a month ago. Cash-wise, here's what we look like. So we increased our projected fiscal year 21 beginning cash balance by about 26,000. So now it is 3,152. At the last presentation, it was 26,000 less than that. As a quick summary there, what that is, is we increased those sales and use tax projections by about 66,000. Then we backed out 25,000 for beginning the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we backed out another 15,000 for the implementation of that radio replacement program. So 66,000 minus 25 minus 15 lands us at about that 26,000 that we added in our beginning cash balance. The 40% policy required reserve is now 1,845,000, which is about 9,000 higher than it was at the last presentation. And that's because we increased those projected expenditures a little bit. So that 40% is based off of the budgeted expenditures. So that increased a little bit. We are looking at CD rates right now. They are not great, but we are talking with our bank to see what the best plan is going forward, whether it's to invest it and get a guaranteed rate, even though it's small, or whether or not we, we think we want to take the chance of putting it in our regular bank account and having, having those rates kind of recover a little bit. This would leave us with an excess cash on hand number. This is that, the full cash we have, 3,152. Subtract off the policy require reserve, we'd be left with about one, just over 1.3 million in excess cash on hand. That's about 17,000 higher than what we talked about a month ago. I think I skipped a screen there. I'm going to try to go back here. Okay, it didn't. Okay, so CIP and one-time expenses, this is now 902,500. The only item on this list that changed was City Hall improvements. We increased that by 220,000 for a new total of 315,000. And that includes the lobby, the restrooms, the kitchen, and the administrative offices. And the rest of these items on this list were included in the first presentation and nothing has changed with those. I'm going to pause for a second here because Cynthia has a updated drawing of what that construction project looks like. If the board wants to look at that at this time, they can.
And Linda, if you could allow me to share, if the board does want to, I can give you kind of the highlight of... I still don't have access, Linda. Oh, there we go. Give me now. Okay, thank you. So basically, the area that are shaded are those that would be affected through the $315,000 estimated renovation costs. The bulk of the work would really be in the blue area, some reconfiguration. I'm sorry, the... Yeah, sorry. The vestibule would be reconfigured to create kind of a breezeway. And there would be a double door system so that we have an entrance. And where we have the two doors on the sides currently, those would be closed in. So you would come in to the lobby area. The front counter area where Beth sits would basically stay similar to where it is now, minor changes, little bit of a setup reconfiguration. A conference room would be added that has access off of the vestibule and off of the administrative area. There would be some reconfiguration of some of the office space, but predominantly on this side of the building, it would be paint, carpet, replacement of ceiling tiles as necessary, and lighting. The big piece would be the reconfiguration of the lobby area for the conference room, reconfigured lobby. It does include some work on the police side, creating a move from the court clerk, police clerk to this area off of the vestibule and an interview room. And then there would be a reconfiguration. Currently, the copy machine sits here, and there's kind of mail area here. That would be moved into a copy and work area on basically what's equivalent of the west side of the kitchen area. Minimal work would occur in the kitchens. The two restrooms would both be reconfigured. And new flooring and paint in there. Ceilings would be dropped. One of the things that we would do in this area where the court clerk currently is would be to drop that ceiling so that in the interim between the time that this work is completed and there would be future potential renovations to the police side, we could have workspace potentially, especially for the detectives to have larger workspace and separation there. I will, we've had discussions with A3G. We do anticipate bringing forward a change to their contract to include the work and the contract administration for this project. We anticipate bringing that forward on October 6th. That a total just under $7,000. And then we would anticipate looking at the work session on October 20th at a full scope and understanding of this project with the hope that then we would be able to bid that on October 21st with a word of bid in November and construction then through the winter, if the board does approve this as part of the budget.
I have a question. On the conference room, like that 103, is it necessary to have that door off the vestibule? And if we have it, will it be locked and you can only open it from the conference room side?
That's correct. It would be access only from there.
Okay. Is it really necessary to have it?
And I'm sorry, I misspoke. The door is actually here off of the lobby, not the vestibule. But that would be, that way, that would be a public entrance to that as a conference room. And as we spoke, that, that would be a way to be able to meet with people rather than meeting in office space throughout City Hall. I'm sorry, rather than the vestibule, the door is off of the lobby, and that will be a door that could be locked at any time.
Okay.
And that would be kind of the ingress into this part of the building and then as well. There aren't any other questions, Dan? If you want to continue through the budget information?
Yeah, Linda, can you change it back to the other document?
Can you see it?
I can see it. I don't have control yet.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Okay, so that is the list of CIP and one-time expenses that are included in the recommended fiscal year 21 budget. We also kept included the transfer to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund so that we can start seeding that reserve. That's not a change from the first presentation. So where does that leave us utilizing cash on hand during the year? So the beginning excess cash on hand was just over 1.3 million. We are going to use 900,000 of that for those CIP and other one-time expenses. We are going to transfer 40,000 of that over to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. So that would leave us with an excess cash on hand of 365,000. And these red numbers are, the dollar amount changes from last presentation to this presentation. And that 365,000 is still about 8% over and above what the required reserve amount is. So we're not touching the reserve at all. The reserve stays intact. We're just reducing that excess cash on hand to 365,000. So at the end of the year, we have that excess cash on hand that's left over, 365,000. We still have that 40% policy required reserve that's sitting there. The revenue over expenditure projection is this 21,490. So our ending cash balance is 2231,000, which is about a 48.4% reserve in the general fund. The future CIP list in the general fund is still those phase two and phase three of the campground electric upgrades. That would be 30,022, 30,023. And then we're still looking at the construction of the combined streets and parks building. Where the fiscal year 21 budget contains engineering costs. The fiscal year 22 more than likely will contain the construction costs. However, that's likely going to be funded through some sort of debt issuance. We're still looking at $40,000 in transfers to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund over the next nine years as well. The police can reconfiguration. We're going to wait until we see what may happen or if the public safety sales tax gets approved. So the fund balance in the general fund for the next five years looks like this. At the end of fiscal year 20, 1,336,000. At the end of next year, 386,000. This is the utilization of that 900,000 or so for CIP. Then we use a little bit more of that, drop down to 317 the year after, then to 60. By this time, this is where the, the other CIP list kind of runs out. And we stay steady at this 245, 243. And again, this is over and above the 40% reserve. So this is not touching the reserve at all. And that's the end of the general fund conversation. So in the trade... Go ahead.
Um, do you, are you planning to talk a little bit about health insurance? Is you going to do that here or further on the other line?
Yeah, you're right. This is the, this is the appropriate place to talk about it. So kind of two things we want to, we want to note here is we made some changes from the last budget presentation to this presentation based on the conversation, which was heavily aided by the fact that those August sales and use tax numbers came in higher than what our August projections were. So we should, we should also inform you that the September sales and use tax numbers came in above what we had projected for September sales and use taxes. So we still continue to see that, that trend of those revenues exceeding the expenditures that are, exceeding the revenue that we projected. On the other side of that, the health insurance premiums during that first presentation, I noted that we included a 15% increase in the fiscal year 21 budget. We actually received those numbers earlier this week. I think it was Monday. And that increase came in at basically double that. So staff is looking at ways to potentially reduce that number using our broker to negotiate that number down. We are looking at, there's always the possibility to switch providers, which we've done that a couple of years in a row now. So we, we don't really want to do that if we can avoid it. Another option would be changing the structure of our employee, employer percentage split on those. And we actually have some interesting data that, on average, we contribute more as an employer to those premiums than the average entity our size does. So we could, we, there's some justification in potentially increasing what the employee pays to those plans. Cynthia or Nikki, is there anything you want to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to add to that is, is given the financial condition in which we find ourselves with an increased sales tax revenues is, as Dan indicated, sales tax collections were higher in September than in August. And the September numbers were the highest in a number of years. So that puts us in a good, good position. Dan has indicated a number of ways that we could look at offsetting the increase in health insurance. What I would like to propose and hopefully try to focus on is we continue to work with our broker in trying to bring that increase down to a lower number, more in the range. We'd like to see closer to 20 to 23%. Continue those negotiations and begin working with employees to set up an expectation of a higher contribution level by them in the coming year. Not, not... Thrilled with, with asking them right now to increase the amount they're giving to, contributing on their health insurance. But we want to set up expectations of that renew into the future.
I have a question. On that increase, is that across the board as far as other entities? Or did we have higher claims again? I know last year we discussed the number of claims we had overall.
That is an ongoing point of question and concern with our broker. We're not able to get good comparative data on that information. Now also remember, Melissa, that we just got this increase information yesterday. So our broker is trying to digest that. We need to have some discussions with them. And we've also indicated that at, you know, any point in the future, we may still be looking at, at a different brokerage in providing those services. We do know that there are a few instances of some high-cost claims. But because we are a small organization, they can't share that information with us. Because if we knew some of those claims, we might know who those people were. So there's, there's some hip of discussions there as well. So from the insurance perspective, there is still work to be done. I guess we'd like some direction from the board of comfort level with moving forward as we are trying to bring those numbers down, perhaps relying some on that excess cash or, or some other directive.
Yeah, and before we, I do want to have that conversation, let the board, let the board talk through that. But I just want to note that with those September numbers coming in higher than what we estimated, it's likely that, oops, let me go back. This million, this 1,307,000 for beginning cash on hand for fiscal year 21, it's likely that, that if we use those September numbers and update our projections again, it's likely that that number goes up again. So which kind of turns, in turn makes all the rest of these numbers go up again. So we, if the, if through to the discussions with the broker and everything, we decide that, or it ends up being that the medical insurance increase is above 15% that we budgeted, then we can look at doing a budget amendment and basically just looking at that excess cash on hand number and utilizing a little bit of that to offset those costs.
What's the dollar amount for the increase?
It's roughly, Nikki, did we calculate roughly 36,000?
Yes, and the, the other thing I would add to what Dan was just saying is that that timing also works with open enrollment because, of course, we're assuming people will stay in the same plans and the same people will stay enrolled as were last year. So, you know, having one person drop coverage will, could absorb, you know, a third of that increase. But on the same way, having two people add could make it even worse. So it may make sense depending on what we hear from, from a renewal standpoint. And when we, once we have one more month of sales tax, to kind of wait a little bit to make any kind of official amendment.
Whenever we have that type of an increase or any year we've had increases, which probably every year, how much of that is passed on to the employee? And how much does the city absorb? Is it 50, 2/3, 1/3? I mean, what do we look at there?
I mean, the past couple of years, we've kept it, we've kept the proportionate share the same. So it's kind of gone, I think, probably, Dan, two or three years. I think probably Dan, two or three years it's been, we haven't changed that share. So it's been equally passed on, but in that in equal distribution, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So, so let's, so assume that somebody's insurance plan over the course of the year is a six thousand dollar plan. The employee might pay ten percent of that and the employer pays ninety. So they pay six hundred, we pay the other fifty-four hundred. If that plan increased to seven thousand dollars, typically what we've done is we've kept the ten percent, ninety percent split the same. So now the employee is paying seven hundred, we're paying sixty-three hundred. And that's exactly, th- those are the types of not following that suit is something we need to examine.
I mean, I, you know, I, from an employee standpoint, I don't want my portion to increase, but as insurance cost goes up, I really think that's the conversation we need to be having.
And, and that's exactly to my point earlier, that that is the, the conversation that we, we want to be having with employees over the next year. And, and thus my, my recommendation that that be kept at the same level this year and that we start preparing employees for that change in the coming year. And that, that change is implemented in concert also with any increases that might incur.
So then last year, then we started doing wellness program also. Is that been utilized and?
We have explored pieces of a wellness program. Yeah. Yes.
So do we have a tobacco non-use discount?
No, we do not. We have talked about that. That's something that we've continued to look at.
Yeah, I think plan design can get us a lot of the way of where we need to be. I'm happy with Melissa, you know. We're now living in a world, we have to take more ownership of our own, our choices. What we're gonna pay for in terms, I think. Whether we have a separate subcommittee or this finance committee, they, you know, sit down and look into a pretty clear plan design. In letting those things. So we have this year's budget, twenty-one budget. Oh, so he.
No, we don't have any for a compensation package.
If we're paying more than market.
But so from that perspective, yeah.
Full, full reward.
Right, right.
I think the last decade, every year I've had. Out of pocket. I don't know what you do. And so we're we've gone pretty long, right?
And we have seen, and as Dan outlined, we've seen those increases, probably not the proportionate increases. It's just where we need to be, we, we need to be looking at that and we need to be preparing employees for that.
I think you guys can negotiate it down closer to like five thousand. Plug that number in and see what it looks like. Then prepare them for next year. We don't always get that plug. My job. You just tell us about the four weeks before.
Open enrollment. Our policy starts December one. So open enrollment is typically through the month of, mid-month of November.
So we pay one year, one, every year we're gonna be paying one month. Last year's great, been eleven months.
Yes.
But we could theoretically get some plan design this year, right?
Some change plan design?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I think that we've, we've changed plan design basically every year that I've been here. And I think historically, we've, we've done that a lot as, as well. It's another piece of what Dan outlined, that is as another piece to look at.
Yeah, I think some of the, you know, like the basic. Back of this year, right? I think. That's actually my favorite discount. The significant amount.
Yeah.
I'm not quite that, but.
Yeah, no, understood.
I mean, it's like your debt. There's only now.
From.
I'll just say, you know, I mean, that's like staying in all of them. Yeah. So I give you guys everything you need.
In thinking about additional budget review, do you want additional discussion between now and October if we?
I'd like to see finance committee, but that's right before our, we have another board meeting before that, so maybe.
Yeah, the board meeting would be before that.
Some numbers.
And what we, well, part of that will, will depend on when we get the numbers from, from B K D.
Finance committee before the next board of all of them instead of.
Potentially, do we have on the agenda for?
Or do you have a subject? Something to do with that. That's. I think about that. I think I can bring something.
Um, we can, Nikki, do you know timeline of when we might come from B K D? So as with regard to their discussions with United?
No, I heard nothing today. So I mean, I'm assuming this week for sure.
So can we just do this? Can you just work with Alderman Blocker and Alderman Wilson? We got time for y'all, three of you to talk, sit down and talk. Have a nice conversation for the board. Don't need a problem. I mean, still impromptu, the three of you guys get to give it that work. Alderman Wilson, you okay with that?
Yes.
As Nikki gets there, you guys hop on a call. After. One three year later. Hi.
So then, so then if we do that, October sixth, um, we probably need to revisit with the board and adjust in our budget discussion.
Yep. Immediately a placeholder on the agenda for the sixth meeting. They haven't had a chance to chat yet by then, but I'm hoping I guess two weeks before the next agenda is due. Hopefully three that get together.
So if we look at October sixth for that health insurance, then we probably need to be looking at a special meeting on perhaps the thirteenth for first reading of the budget, second reading on the twentieth, so we can have it adopted before the fiscal year. Staff, does that make sense?
I would be okay with the board. Alderman, Blocker and Alderman Wilson. Get that number to you guys so they can be in the white reports.
Okay.
If there's another Alderman that would like to be involved in that discussion, but I think, let me know now. But I'd rather all the six have a baked budget.
Have a baked budget with, that has that information. Okay. Okay. Staff, any questions or concerns clarification on that?
Did you, did you say we're going to decide a date to talk with that new subcommittee or did you pick one? I couldn't hear.
I, I, I just want the budget first reading on the sixth. I'm leaving it up to you and Alderman Blocker and Alderman Wilson to get that number in the budget for this.
Okay.
Alderman Atkins, Alderman Ullodell, or server, do you want to be involved in that discussion too?
Definitely.
If Lurchy has said no, can't see the other three. Do you see that? I have glitter on the wall. I'll take side.
I see Dan, I see Alderman Ullodell shaking his head, no.
All right, so. I don't need to be involved.
Sorry, no.
Yeah.
Alderman Atkins.
Cause that would give us first reading on the sixth, second reading. We have to make it, I mean, it's a.
Okay.
Okay, am I good to move on?
Sure.
Okay. We'll touch real bit, real quick on these next couple of funds. First one is the transportation sales tax fund. The only change from the August eighteenth presentation until now is we changed our fiscal year twenty expenditure projections, assuming approval of the budget amendment tonight and then expenditure of those additional funds. That's for the Greyhawk Roundabout. And this is what the revenue and expense history has been in this fund for nineteen actual, twenty projected and twenty-one budget. So the effect that that small change that we had is we would be reducing the beginning cash balance by thirty-eight thousand. So the new cash balance in this fund at the beginning of twenty-one would be just under four hundred and fifty thousand. We still have the same sales tax revenue. We still anticipate the same operating expenditures. We did not change any of the CIP expenditures for next year. But that has a new ending cash balance now of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So in this fund, ending cash balance over the years, this is where we'd be at the end of twenty. We're going to eat into that next year to do a good chunk of the asphalt overlay program. We are going to hold steady for the next fiscal year. And then we're going to take another chunk of our cash balance out in twenty-three for some more work and then we'll hold, hold steady at that cash balance after that. So that's the only change in the transportation sales tax fund. And then lastly, we didn't talk about this fund last time at all. But we did receive word from our auditors that we needed to include the special allocation fund as a budgeted fund for us. So here is the slide that summarizes the special allocation fund. And the special allocation fund is, is one hundred percent associated with the marketplace. And this is essentially going to be a zero balance fund. It is the recipient of property tax revenues that are over and above the base. It is the recipient of sales tax revenue over and above the base. And by, when I say the base, I mean the base that was established in the TIF plan. And then it's also the recipient of the, the capital improvement district sales tax. So we project those numbers, the, the capital improvement district has its own board. They submitted a budget to us, which the finance committee saw last week. But that three hundred thousand dollars comes from their budget amount. This two hundred thousand in sales over the base and twenty thousand in property tax revenue over the base, those come from our calculations. So that would give a total revenue projection of this fund next year, five hundred and twenty thousand. And then the CID budget contains eight thousand dollars in administrative costs. And the other five hundred and twelve thousand would be payments that go back to the developer as part of the TIF plan. So the TIF, the, the developer of the TIF has to submit reimbursement requests. They have not done that yet. We assume that they will in twenty twenty-one. And more than likely their reimbursement request is going to be more than we can reimburse at this point. So we are projecting that i- if we take in five hundred and twenty thousand in revenue, we'll pay these eight thousand in administrative costs and we'll pay the, the rest of it out in those reimbursement payments to the, to the developer. Now, the TIF plan does say that all of those reimbursement requests need to be approved by you guys, by this board. So once we do receive that reimbursement request, we'll go to you guys for approval. And then as we start to see this revenue, then we'll be making those reimbursement payments out to the developer. So then this fund has a projected ending cash balance of zero dollars. So money in, money out. But these do need to be budgeted is what we heard. And then that's it. All the rest of the slides in here have not been changed since that August eighteenth presentation for all the other funds. So are there any questions about the general fund? The transportation sales tax fund, the special allocation fund that I went over tonight? Or is there anything from any other funds that anybody wants to review again? And if not, then I'll work with Nikki. After she talks with Melissa and Jeff and they have a insurance plan, we will get that included in the general fund budget and include a summary of that, of any changes that we made for that October sixth, first reading of the twenty twenty-one recommended budget.
Ready? Everybody on this one? You ready? All right, Dan, sounds like you got a fairly easy job. Nikki, wish you the best.
Nikki and I have been texting.
Okay. Number three discussion of drainage issue at one oh four North Bridge Street, Mr. Owens here.
Chuck has a brief presentation.
Yeah.
Well, that was a presentation, but I summarized. I'll summarize the information provided, but we'll keep the public force guys brief.
So back in twenty eighteen, the city completed their downtown street skate project. Project included improvements along Main Street from one sixty-nine to commercial. During the design, an undocumented connection to the storm sewer system was found and in remembrance park. At that time, it was assumed to be old and unnecessary. And line from the park and it was not reconnected. So following a couple of heavy rains in nineteen, and the building at one oh four North Bridge owned by Mr. Owens experienced some flooding.
Yeah.
I know I got.
I know.
Yeah, if you want to turn more toward him.
Sure. So the line was apparently installed many years ago, but no current staff was aware of it and of the purpose of it. So when the improvements to Main Street were completed, it just was assumed it was an abandoned line. Mr. Owens is the owner of the building. And Mr. Owens did file a claim with their insurance company. Thomas McGee did make a good faith cost of defense offer of about twenty-five hundred dollars to Mr. Owens, and he has not accepted it at this point. Instead, he's requested to discuss this with the board. I'm assuming to get the line reconnected. Couple other things that the board should probably know about. There are other businesses along North Bridge Street that are experiencing some water issues. There's a couple of buildings back there that have big old mounds of concrete or asphalt trying to divert the water from their buildings. And recently, the real estate office has expressed interest in participating or doing some improvements to keep water from his building to that alley. It's not really a public alley because a lot of the property where everybody is using as an alley is owned privately. So I presented a few options for the board to consider. We could reestablish the drain from one oh four Bridge Street. If that the board desires to do that, there, there's going to be a cost because we're going to have to tear up some of the existing improvements that are in remembrance park. And depending on how we do that, if we reconnect it back into the storm sewer, it'll be more expensive because we'll tear up sidewalk and some of the brick and plantings. And, and we're not exactly sure where it's disconnected at. So it may be more extensive than what we're thinking, but our thought is that when the contractor put those improvements in, he probably just cut it off just out of his way. So hopefully that's the case. And we could extend the line, that same line out into the alley, just have it daylight into the alley and just wash out into the alley. And that would be a little less expensive because we would hopefully find that under some of the pompous grass and start from there versus cutting across the sidewalk and stuff. Another issue there is obviously we've got some other businesses experiencing some water issues. And we don't own all the property. And if we were to take that on as a, you know, public project, we would want to get the rights to that property. So we would have a dedicated alleyway. And we could have all the owners participate. That will be a lot more expensive. We're talking fifty plus thousand. And I don't know if people are prepared for that. And we could add that into our next phase of our Main Street program. It's coming up. We'll be bidding that. We could add that as an alternate and at least see what the prices are. So. So that's the background. What we're requesting tonight is what direction does the board have for us? I mean, do you want to reconnect the line? Who's gonna pay for that reconnection? And are we going to defer any projects that we currently have scheduled? What's the priority for this one private service line? Or do we look at a bigger drainage issue, drainage area project? Taking into consideration all the other businesses as well and try and come up with a solution that way. That's a significantly bigger project. It's gonna cost a lot more. And again, what's your priority for that?
Is is best practice when you're running up against lines that are estimated?
You know, I can't. I can't I can't answer that because I don't know what the situation was. I don't know if when they looked at it, it looked plugged, it they they may have tried to check it. I I just don't know. I I would probably done a little more investigating because the inlet is only about a hundred feet away.
So someone else in the city that kind of signed off on just ignoring it at some point, not trying to figure it out or?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
Honestly, I I can recall what the process was through that. There was probably some discussion that because it led to courtyard park. I think we had some discussion that there was an assumption that, that, you know, it park at some point.
Remember it, sir.
I'm sorry, remember it's park and made the determination that no, we we don't need that anymore. There's not an irrigation system needed there and did not know, weren't aware of kind of the off the books understanding of of that connection.
Typically, a storm drain would have an easement.
Yes. Yes. Either an easement or a license or some type of agreement to where you're cutting across the city property and tying into a city storm sewer.
It was probably the same through the city behind it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there was any mistakes made. I just think.
I don't think there was no nefarious intent. And if you recall, many of our projects, you know, we've we've come across lines that we've not necessarily known where they were and we're continually trying to improve our processes and our documentation of where lines are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know Mr. Owen gave a meeting about a month and a half ago. And we actually ended a little early, and so I kind of promised him his his day before the boards. I'd like to hear from Mr. Owen and allow him to speak.
Well, what are you speaking about? It wouldn't be no problem to find that line. It starts there to Austin in the building and a guy had a spoke button and he run it down there. And he got down to the back of the stretch on the other side of the stone and hit dirt so he couldn't. But you could get a bead on that line and run down there in the sidewalk there in the city and on into the from there into the storm sewer. It wouldn't be a big deal to locate it.
So I guess my question, what's your proposal? What what would you like to see? I know that.
I want what I want the line hooked back up.
Okay, and who pays for that?
Well. Ready for me to talk?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is.
Prior before I come down there to the city board meeting here sometime back, I was talking to Bill Hill. He rented the building there for thirty-four years and he was gonna come to city council meeting then, but he had emergency in the family and didn't make it. And about two, three days later, he come brought me this letter. I rented one oh four North Bridge Street for Jim turning around from nineteen eighty-four to twenty eighteen, that's thirty-four years. The building never flooded until the city bought the property from Colonel Kinder and then raised the dirt level almost a foot, I think it was more than a foot. Jim Jim confronted the city about the problem, so the city installed a drain near the rear door of Jim and Shirley's building. The drains solved the water problem that was caused by the city. Our family has renovated several houses to commercial buildings here in town to meet city code. Then we never had any issue with the city until they walked the lock from at one oh two North Bridge Street from Kinder and put railroad ties across the west side of the lock and hold in dirt permanent, the lock, they put her more cutting off the drains. I talked to my church, the city administrator about the problem. To prevent the problem, they they put in a storm drain that took care of the problem. But then the city completed the street street, they didn't hook the drain back up. And we talked to Jack Hadrick and he gave me a form to fill out. And the next thing I know then in August, Lena Blackman, Mike Mullin, with Thomas McGee Insurance offered to send me some money so I could start repairing. I told her it was an ongoing problem that when it framed, you got water in in the building, I can't redo it until the drain is fixed. Later she called back and asked if she could send an adjustment gesture to look at the building. I said, yes. They came and looked at it. Later, she sent me an offer and a release paper. I asked I asked about the drain being hooked up. She said that she was she was the she said that was the city's problem. She only takes care of the damage inside the building that the city caused. So. I think it should be.
And I'm just trying to make sure I get the the date straight. Did you say twenty eighteen? When the I'm trying to, I think you, I think I heard you reference twenty eighteen is when Remembrance Park was bottomed and put together? Then two thousand eight? What year was that?
When what happened?
When when the city acquired the property from Kinder, that was.
Oh, I I don't know.
Or or even. And then two thousand eight, the timeline with Steven and Shrek would have been in the two thousand five to eight.
It been in the eighties.
Yeah, I think you mentioned the problem is we didn't have any documentation at that line of this. And so you know, disconnecting a line that we thought was just a park seemed reasonable.
Well, imagine a line still in there where the catch was there in the sidewalk. You know, they'd looked in there and seen a green eight inch green plastic pipe and have looked at the drain on the the property and looked in there and see the eight inch green pipe, I think they know where.
So back to Jeff's original question, what would you like us to do with this? What was our budgeted amount last year on Remembrance Park renovation? Thirty-five hundred?
I was thinking it was seventy-five hundred is probably about right. I don't think it was over twelve-five. I think I think seventy-five hundred eighty thousand was exactly what we we looked at.
So.
And I think it wasn't last year, it was eighteen.
Okay. Construction costs of tearing up our new sidewalks and putting in the drain connection and put in another new sidewalk track, what do you think?
Well.
We'll work with that down, right?
Yeah, it it really depends on where that pipe is and what condition it's in, you know, how far back we'll have to go. I mean, it could be relatively simple if it's just right there under that first panel of sidewalk. And then, you know, where where we can connect back into it.
I would be more interested in addressing a long-term solution, working with this great solution, fixing the problem for everybody. And that's everyone participating in that. I, you know, I don't know, Mr. Owens, if you'd be amiable to try to figure out that solution and making that work.
Hold on, he's got no.
Sure enough.
Draw water off of that alley there runs down and importing into that drain too, very much.
Is there some sort of temporary solution to clear this out, this portion up and can we put a temporary pipe somewhere or something?
Well, that was the kind of that second option. We could, as cheap as we can, find where that pipe is, dig up some pampas grass and just let it pop out, pop out of the ground. There's enough fall between where that drain leaves at Mr. Owens' property and where we could just let it dump down to the ground, just surface drain. And there's enough fall. It may hold a little water in the pipe, but it won't go back into the building. And that we could potentially do on an interim basis because it will take some time to figure out that inverted crown so we can get everything to grain. So that could be done. And that would be the minimal cost. And and again, these are really ballpark numbers. I mean, if you.
I I'm not a fan of other blind engineering to solve the problem. That's what was happening, right? There's no documentation, there was no engineer, their drain dropped into a storm sewer.
I think I think a situation like that would create a longer, we would have the documentation of it now as to what happened, but it would create a long-term solution. It's a temporary fix, which is what the what the other was.
Yeah.
The major issue too is the fact, remember that the the floor of the building is below grade levels. And so that that's that is that's a concern.
Here's my concern. We fixed the drain, you're back here in a month saying we need something else fixed, we need something else fixed. You know, the floor is below grade.
What what needs that and else, that drain? We love that drain, okay, and there was then no problem.
Yeah, so before that, it was, you know, the the building is rented by a landscape company and they were. You know, then I get, I get letters from attorneys from you with the attorneys, hiring attorney. It's hard for me to trust that that's the end of it. That it's hard for me to trust that. The the history doesn't tell me that either. So the only thing that I would entertain is if we work with owners to figure out a cost to do it the right way. I don't know about the rest of the work, but that's the only doing it the right way. That's why I said, I want to figure out the long-term solution if that works for everybody. You know, I appreciate the short-term problem you have and thanks to the extent that this board can help figure out the long-term solution to fix that problem is where I'm interested. So, you know, that's gonna involve, you know, easements and other things, you know, if that's something you're amiable to, I think we have our support to see if we can pull that together. And we look at that as something we kind of try to do, as you mentioned, with the next phase of street street. I think that's the solution. I'm interested. I know the long-term problem.
Do you have the drawings of the storm sewer that before the the re- done them?
Benny, you mean your drain?
No, the city's drain that out on the street that they replaced. You got the drawing on there?
I'd have to look and see. I don't know.
The highway department storm sewer.
Right.
I I'm pretty sure MoDOT does engineering before they put stuff down.
Well, if you had that and you could run a beat down from that other one down there, you could find where that catch was down there, where there was. And it could be, oh, that dude would go in there and hook it up to the one running into the.
Yeah, I can I can go out there with a shovel and a straight edge too and and figure out a drain, but it's not gonna be a legal connection, it's not gonna be an infrastructure connection. So we need a.
I think what I need to do is probably sit down with Mr. Owens tomorrow and talk to him about, because I don't know that he understands we're trying to do a bigger project to take care of everybody. I know I know he wants to get his line hooked up.
I would agree with the long-term solution versus brewery because I know how those buildings flood when I helped a former business owner in those same buildings and the amount of water that does come in on the backside from that alley. So I think if possible, we do definitely need to look at a longer-term solution.
Yeah, I I talked to Eric. I know the R put in the the asphalt dam. Yeah, we can't. So what are we gonna do? We gotta do right, but we need defense and we do building owner participation.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Excuse me, do we have a projection on how long that is all gonna take?
Part of that's gonna be up to you all. You know, there's gonna be an easement required, you know? If you own part of that non-existent alley, right? You know, are you willing to provide that easement so we can fix the problem?
Well. What's your chances of pulling that off with that many people?
There aren't actually that many people.
Yeah.
The city owns a good.
Take a long time to do that.
Well, it's Eric who wants this fixed. Lance Mitchell owns two of the buildings. So it's you, Mr. Becker and the. The R. We own the property behind Becker's property. Okay, we want to, right? Is that what I read?
There there is a portion matter that we do.
Yeah. And Eric owns the western side, right?
It depends on hardest, but yes.
Yeah, so maybe Mitchell's and maybe the R. But I haven't, he's only four.
Well, I'm losing money over dating that thing, being that I did. And if you're gonna jack with all of the others up there, I've been involved in doing that too and wound up paying a big part of the bill.
Yeah, I think, you know, from my standpoint, I apologize that this this wasn't done right the first time. You know, this is not documented, it was done on a fly. We've unfortunately covered several of these these issues. They had to figure out the right one. That sometimes is is not the easiest for those involved in those short-term fixes that weren't documented. So from that perspective, I'm sorry that that occurred, but we've got to figure out the right solution truly fix the problem and not create additional problems down the road by figuring out the quick and easy one. You know, a pipe that was put in that wasn't engineered is not something we can trust for another hundred years. So let's find the right solution, get it fixed and move forward.
Well. I'm worried about getting, I'm worried about getting block buildings fixed and stood up the whole town.
Understood, but I I think Chuck will I think Chuck has his direction for the board. Work with Mr. Owens on making sure we have easements and seeing whatever it costs for the permanent solution. And if we can add it on the street tape, I mean, that's starting, what, October?
Maybe bidding.
Bidding.
Yeah.
The end of that.
Okay. Well, this is the timeline, it's not any, it's not undefined, so faster we get the easement, the faster we get acceptance of that participation, the faster it gets added to street skate. If you sit on the easement for three months like some people do, it's not gonna make that happen. So we're we're with Chuck, he'll get you the, maybe we're working the numbers. Chuck, my liver's director. He'll get you the information that we'll need. But no. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You got part.
All right, I'll move to during the first session. All right, I'll move to during the first session. And move to the during the ten-minute recess. Okay, there's a second to that, second, all those in favor of during the work session with a ten-minute recess, say aye. I'll say no. It started in ten minutes, so that would put us at seven twenty. Same bad time, same bad channel?